Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting on this March 20th, 2023. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first two items on the agenda we'll do simultaneous, well, not simultaneously, but one after the other. And first is our invocation. And I didn't get an email from anybody.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I didn't. It must have come late, and then I didn't see the email. So we'll do our invocation, and then please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Yes, sir.
I'm David Logue. I'm representing Passion Church here in town. I lifelong citizen here in Casa Grande. We love it here. So anyhow, just, Lord, we just come before you right now with these matters at hand. We thank you that whenever we need wisdom, you said you can come and ask freely, and you'll give it to us. Tonight, I think we need wisdom. I thank you, Lord, that you're going to be with us here tonight, making these decisions that we have to make tonight. I thank you. Also, I lift up these firefighters behind me here, and our police officers that are out there, our first responders. Lord, we thank you that you are protecting them where they're at on the job and watching over them. I thank you that you're with all of us in all our decisions that we go through each and every single day. I thank you, the Lord, that you're taking Casa Grande to some new levels, and it's more than I could ever dream or imagine. It's getting big. So I thank you that these men and women are here to hear from you, to make some decisions that's going to help us move forward in all that Casa Grande is going to be. We know that it's going to be great. We give you praise and honor in Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen.
Please show me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave, for the end of the Passion Church. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Jeff, for the pledge. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
Next item is our minutes. Item C.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the city council meeting, regular meeting minutes from March 6, 2023.
March 1. No, claims. I'm sorry. Wrong line. Never mind. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. We'll move to item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated March 1 through 14, 2023 as presented.
Second. The motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda, Mr. Rains?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody on the council? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Next, we have special presentations. And tonight, we are honored to have our local state representative, Ms. Teresa Martinez, here tonight. Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you. I am State Representative Teresa Martinez. I represent LD 16, and I live in Casa Grande on Key West Road in Vilago. 1978, Christmas Eve, my father died. He died in a horrible, horrible car accident. He was killed, and the last man he saw, or the last people he saw, were firefighters. On the way to the hospital in Tucson, he did pass away. And I think about that day often, about the compassion that he saw. I know that he looked up, as any of us would in a car accident, and looked up. And when we see our first responders, we think, oh, God, thank God, they're here to help me. And so all firefighters have a special place in my heart for that reason. Recently, we had some magnificent folks win some outstanding awards, and I wanted to take a moment from the state of Arizona to congratulate them and thank them. Mr. Mayor, will you come down and help me? The whole council can come and help me. Everybody can thank our firefighters. And maybe the chief might want to come and be with us. I don't see. Where is he? There he is. All right. Now, I'm pretty loud, so I don't need a mic unless you want them, and I can read their names aloud if you guys want to stand right there. How about we do this? You want to have them all come up, and then they're going to come get the award for me, or what are we doing?
You can do that real quick, yeah.
Okay. So we'll come up. One big group picture. And this could have been my brother right here. We just found out. That's a really long story. Well, how about we go get a picture, and I'll start saying their names? We'll just say quickly. I'm going to be in the picture real quick. Okay. Okay, but so this one goes to Martha Bender. The next, community service, Joe Leos. And I'm going to adopt him. My little brother, Ernie Delgado. Captain Andy Miller. Okay. Yes. Mr. Ryan Porter. John Holliday. Ryan Adams. Dispatcher DJ DeLuca. Pete Benzine. Jonathan Reynolds. Okay, and please forgive me. Anier Navarro Perez. How do I say that?
My brother.
Oh, okay. Joseph Samuel? Okay. I'm sorry. Dispatcher Stephanie Servian? Servian? I'm sorry. Captain Michael Turley. Andrew Leary. JR Johnson. He's coming. He's coming. Surprise. Jesus Rivas? Tracy Shambolin? Shambolin? I'm sorry. Brandon Baker. John Larson? Jacob Smith? I'm looking. I'm looking. I'm looking at Martha, right? Alberto Serrano. Tyler Bogert? Tyler? Robin Settle? Matthew Sawyer? And Alan Nichols? And this one got two. From the state of Arizona, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your outstanding service and commitment to our community. In our times when we are struggling the most, it is folks like you who step up, the dispatchers who take the calls, the engineers that drive, the captains that run the shift, and the firemen that just get out and do the hard work. Thank you from your community. And then our county, our county recorder right there, give them a list.
We did. Herman and Edwards.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. Thank you, Representative Martinez. All right, next we'll move to our consent agenda, which is item G on our agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in the normal sequence of the agenda. So is there any council member wants to remove anything? Anyone from the public? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor McFarland, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Or motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is our item H, which is our public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council with a reminder that if you do come forward, please state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and remember that it is not an agendized item, so we cannot comment on it, but you're certainly welcome to address the council. Is anyone here who would like to address the council? This is the opportunity. This is our public comment section. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public comments. We'll move to item I-1. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council awarded contract to, for construction manager risk services to Earthscapes Incorporated for guaranteed maximum price of $383,813. I did put together a quick slide presentation just to kind of give you a little bit of a background of the project. Phase one of the widening of Cortson, or excuse me, widening of Pierrot Road from Cortson to O'Neill was done as part of the rec center construction project, and that was completed in 2019. Phase two, from O'Neill South to Cottonwood Lane, was completed as a separate project in 2021. And now we're moving forward with phase three, which is the median landscaping of the entire segment of roadway. Rick Engineering is the company that designed this for us, and then we selected Earthscapes through a qualifications-based process. They were the only submittal, therefore they were the most qualified candidate for the job. They have been working with us at preconstruction services, helping us put together this guaranteed maximum price along with our design engineers, and we did that within our spending authority, so it did not have to come to city council. So this is the first time you're seeing any type of contract request for Earthscapes. So the goals of the project were to really make the median's eye appealing. We wanted to look for low water use plants, obviously low maintenance of anything that we put in there. We are using a solar powered irrigation controller, and it's also hooked up to Wi-Fi, so we have that ability to manage it when we need to during wet weather. We can turn it off or whatever we need to. And as far as the tree selection, we looked for hardiness of trees. We want them to be able to be contained within the median areas, slow growth so that it promotes a deeper root growth. And of course, that lessens the risk of any blowdown during storms, which we do get around here, and trees don't always stay upright. Hopefully, I can get this to work. So these are just similar landscape features throughout this community and some of the surrounding communities that we just took some photographs of to kind of give you an idea of what our area is going to look like, obviously, as it matures, not right away, because, of course, we can't plant trees that big. We could, but we just can't afford it. So looking at the specific plant selections, we did go with desert willow. It can grow up to 25 feet tall, and of course, with proper pruning, it stays contained in the median area. The Texas ebony, probably one of the most attractive and hardy trees that we were able to find. And also, we chose these different trees because of not only their hardiness in the desert, but as well as their availability. So the southern live oak is the largest evergreen shade tree that we have an option to put in out there. We have the Texas mountain laurel, not as tall a tree, but it'll be a lower, thicker, very colorful impact to the area. Then we get into the lower ground cover. We start out with the blue elf aloe. And of course, these are all drought tolerant. The Baja fairy duster, the dwarf scarlet bottle brush, stays green year round, the desert spoon, and of course, when they shoot their seed out there, 10 to 15 feet in the air, it's very impressive in the landscape areas. The red yucca, the, I'm not going to pronounce this right, chuparasa? It's Spanish. It's Spanish for hummingbird. That's all I know. Very attractive and drought tolerant as well. The Chicharron rain sage isn't as dependent on the humidity during monsoons, which is good, because sometimes our humidity levels are pretty low. And then we finish with the Perry's Pent, can't say it, Pentstemon. So those are the different plants that we chose. We have the irrigation plans and the planting plan all put together. So with the approval of this contract, we can move forward with getting this very important roadway beautified. We did have $425,000 budgeted for this project, and even with the preconstruction services from Earthscapes, we're just under $400,000 total. So with this contract with approval tonight for $383,813, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jeff?
Kevin, you don't have a drawing of where the trees would be positioned in the median, do you?
Yeah, I mean, the plan set is all finished, and it shows where each, each of these species will be planted. And of course, we chose those locations to ensure that we're not going to create sight visibility issues at intersections. We want to, you know, a linear impact as people drive through there, and then, of course, maintaining the safety as people navigate through that corridor.
Thank you.
Be happy to share that with you as much information as you'd like, but it's a bunch of circles and spots on a map, and doesn't really show you much.
Anyone else? Thank you, because I've been wondering when we're going to finally landscape Pierrot. So good news. It's going to be done. All right. Thank you, Kevin. If no one else has any comments or questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5524. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Earthscapes, Inc. to provide construction management at-risk services for the Pierrot Road median landscape improvements from Cottonwood Lane to Cortson Road, authorizing expenditure funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5524 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is our boards and commissions. We have a recommendation to appoint Charles Yednak to the Board of Adjustments with the term expiring on November 17, 2023. Is Charles here? My glasses on. Oops, don't see him. So, okay. So number one, thank you to Charles. And then, number two, I entertain a motion to approve Charles?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Again, thank you, Charles, for his work for the city. And then we'll move to item K. K-1, this is considering approval of resolution number 5525. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council make a formal motion to approve and adopt the 2023 airport master plan update. As you'll recall, the city council did authorize an ADOT grant for this master plan through resolution 5281, and we started this project, or we finished this project earlier this year, and our consultant did a presentation for council on February 21, 2023. The airport master plan is really the guiding document that we use to map out what those future improvements could be at the airport. The more important part is the airport layout plan. If something's not on that layout plan, we can't build it unless we amend that plan. So we make sure that that airport layout plan is as accurate as we can, depending on what type of growth we're going to see at the airport. So we've tried to plan that out through the process. We had a very successful public outreach process. Many people took advantage of the work sessions that we had and provided us really valuable input to put this document together. I don't have any other formal presentation with that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. I, just to remind everybody that, you know, we've had a pretty thorough presentation on this. I know I was on the, on the committee also, so I've been on this for about six months, maybe a little longer, and I think it was well done, and I think we have a good plan. So, yeah, I want to thank our consultants for all the work they did, as well as your staff, Kevin, for all the work they've done. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Kevin on this?
No.
So, I mean, this is kind of a formality at this point, because we've kind of hashed through this. So, all right, well, seeing no comments or questions, then I will call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5525. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving and adopting the Casa Grande Municipal Airport Master Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution 5525 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is item K-2. This is to consider approval of resolution number 5526. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute an authorization of services between the city of Casa Grande and CNS Engineers in an amount not to exceed $98,126, and that's for the terminal apron project. That'll be the design of that pavement improvement project for the airport. Of course, city council did authorize us accepting that grant through resolution 5446 from ADOT for $100,000. So this is the contract that'll move CNS forward with that design effort. It is part of our five-year plan at the airport. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? All right. Well, seeing none, then I'll entertain a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5526. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the scope of work with CNS Engineers, Inc. for the Casa Grande Municipal Airport, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5526 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, well, that concludes most of tonight's business. Kind of a short agenda tonight, so we'll move right into our exec, not executive session, sorry, reports. And Bob, I'm going to start with you.
No report, Mayor.
All right, Lisa?
My last chance to get out. Everyone, get out and vote. If anyone needs the QR code, it's the Boys and Girls Club Dancing for the Stars. So, yes, I know I'm really excited about it, I guess I should say. So I guess, I know I'm really excited about it, I guess I should say, but, no, no, but thank you for everyone, for supporting everyone and the organization. Obviously, the mayor is on the board, but no, I think it'll be a great event.
And my daughter's dancing too.
And your daughter's dancing too. There's five of us from Cas Grande, but, but no, so, no, but it'll be good, and it's a good fundraiser, and it's going to be a great event, so thank you for everyone.
It's this Saturday.
It's this Saturday, yeah.
Anybody wants to go, contact the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, still tickets available.
There's still tickets available.
Not many, sold out, I can see why, I'm sure, it's really interesting.
It'll be fun.
So, yeah, so Friday, QR code, vote for Lisa.
Saturday.
On Saturday, you can vote now. You don't have to wait till Saturday. Also, so, last week, I went, we, the LFI dedicated the bench to David Snyder, and, you know, Donna, thank you for attending that, it is such a nice memorial, so if anyone's in the neon park sign, there's a nice bench there in memory of David and everything he's done for the community. And after that, I popped over to the rec dine and dash at the Community Recreation Center. I got there a little late, but, you know, I just, it was just such a nice event, and I got there at the end, so it was a little, you know, dark and not as many people, but, you know, it, it just, the staff there was just so exciting, and they're, you know, playing around with all the kids, obstacle courses, the food trucks, they even had a food truck that had fish, because I can't eat meat on Friday during Lent, but it was just a really nice event. So a couple more events are coming up, March 24th, I think that's this Friday, April 14th, May 5th, and May 26th, so everyone get out there, and especially with the weather is so nice, and they're doing a great job over there. And the other thing is, you know, the Cas Grande alerts, please, if anyone hasn't signed up, sign up for CG alerts. It's so nice to get your little alerts on meetings that are going on and activities, so if anyone hasn't signed up, please sign up for CG alerts. That's it, for me.
Text CG, all one word, CG alerts, one word, to 32665.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Lavender?
Well, good luck on Saturday night, Lisa. We're looking forward to watching it. Is it going to be streamed live like it was last year, too?
I don't know.
Yes, 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 it will, but I'm going to be right up front, I'll be the heckler.
Oh, my God, you would be, you would be right there.
But I also want to thank Councilmember Fitzgibbons for coming out to our B-Wall ceremony that we did on, I think it was March 9th. She helped me recognize 30 extraordinary students that we had at Vilago, and I don't even have to ask anymore, I guess, that you just pop up the pictures. Thank you, Larry. But, Lisa and her husband Dennis did a great job recognizing our students, and so thank you for coming out. Donna, as well, thank you for coming that day, as well as the mayor. Today, I had the opportunity to meet our new congressman from the north side of our city, Congressman Crane. I was impressed with his listening. He took a lot of notes, as different community leaders shared some of the challenges we're all facing, so really productive meeting, I thought. And also on Saturday night, best of luck to our Casa Grande fighters, Abel and Jesus Ramos. Jesus is putting his undefeated 19-0 record on the line in a huge fight up in Las Vegas. It's on pay-per-view, so, that's why I'm asking if it's going to be streamed, so we can watch both.
I'm sure it will be.
I think it will be. Beth?
Thanks, Craig. Got a couple things. I got to do the ribbon cutting for Spanish Trails West in place of the mayor on Friday, and I thank them for keeping it 55-plus, like the neighbors wanted, and they were happy, and they were, showed they're going to have some different newer home builders in there too, so that'll be a very neat, neat thing, because we did it once before, but then it got bought out, so now, sorry, it's a new owner now. This Thursday, the 23rd, the District Three, for the County District Three Community Forum, it's one of the first ones, the first one they've had, it'll be at the rec center at 5:30 with refreshments, and starts at 6:00. And one of the panelists is Anthony Amato from the Youth Commission, who also, in my next note here, Anthony, President of the Youth Commission, was chosen to be the youth representative delegate for the National League of Cities Councils on Youth Evalue, Youth Education and Families, sorry, I just wrote it real small, Youth Education and Families. So out of the entire United States, he's one of the youth delegates, which I think there's only two or three on this. So we're proud and excited, and we found out a little late, and so I wanted to thank Kendra and Holly from the Youth Commission for helping him get that plan with his essay, the mayor, and especially Larry in his office, because it's been a complex planning situation, so the city manager is single-handedly wrangling everything all the way down to travel arrangements, so, thanks, Larry. It's appreciated, and everybody else in his office as well, but it's a great honor for us as a city, and like I said, we invest in our youth, and so this is going to be a neat, neat thing for us and for him to bring back to our community, and there's going to be an article about it in the paper by our favorite reporter, Jody, on Thursday, I believe. So look for that, extra, extra, read all about it. So, yes, he's keeping us busy, and we're excited for that. And that's all I have.
Donna?
A couple quick things. Thank you to Community Services, where there was an issue out at Dave White Park, what we thought were many, many dead fish, were a couple, they went right out and checked it. Just a reminder, everybody's enjoying the parks, but we have to clean up after ourselves in the end. You know, I know that our staff are trying to do a really great job, but it takes all of us, so if you see something, pick it up, throw it away. The mayor's reading program, we are celebrating our 25th year. On the 27th, the mayor and I are hosting a reception for the volunteers at the library. Also, just a note, I don't know if everybody got it, Kaywood Farms was hosting the Chamber of Commerce event on Wednesday night. It is supposed to be really bad weather the next couple days, and so they have canceled that, because they said that if we went out there, our cars probably wouldn't make it out of the dirt, so they're going to reschedule that. I also had the opportunity, some people may have heard about it, there's a group called the Power of 100 Women. It's a volunteer group that, once a year, women come together, and the dues are 100 bucks, that go entirely 100% to a nonprofit in our area. We heard three different nonprofit agencies on Friday night, and the Blue Stars of Maricopa that serve, the moms who serve any way they can to help their sons or spouses or anybody that is in the military and overseas. They do a lot of great things, and a small organization, even though they started in Maricopa, they're all over the county, and they, they were chosen, so it was, it was a really nice night to know that all the money 100% went back to this group who's doing good things, so, Lisa, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
I have nothing. I yielded my time over to.
Thank you, Anthony. Yeah, I was going to also, you know, give out a shout-out on the B-Wall at Vilago, which is still up on the screen, but Mr. Lavender was recognized for a permanent position on the B-Wall as the longstanding principal at Vilago, and now moving over to the high school district. So, good luck in your new role, which I think you started today.
I did.
So, I don't know whether to say congratulations or just good luck, but I know you'll, I know you're doing an amazing job there, so I think.
We are ready to go, we're excited. Obviously, our biggest priority right now is hiring a new principal for Union, but things are, things are going to be happening, and we're going to make the public proud.
Good, good, good to know. We did have Representative, our US Congressman Eli Crane in today, was my first opportunity to meet him. I tried to reach out to all of our congressional representatives and have them come, I've known Juan Siscomani for a while, he's been here several times, this is Eli's first time in Casa Grande, so it was good to have him in town. I got an opportunity to tour with he and gather his assistant, or his number-one guy here in Arizona, gave him a tour of the city of Casa Grande, a little bit of a history of the city. We had some community leaders that were in for about an hour or so this morning, and gave some good exchanges, he took a lot of notes, to Jeff's point, and then I took them around and showed them Lucid, Kohler, you know, kind of gave them a tour of our industrial area, gave them a little tour of downtown, and he was, he was impressed with what we have here in our, in our little city. So it's, it's exciting time, I think, for the city of Casa Grande, I think that we're on the map, because now every meeting I go to up in Phoenix, the comments I get back from people who I speak with, basically, the comments are, you know, "Oh, Casa Grande, you guys got things going on down there," meaning they've heard about us, they know about us, so it's, it's good to see, it's good to hear, because I remember six years ago when I went to, went to some events up there, some, really some tourism events, and they go, "Where's Casa Grand?" "Where's, or is it Casa Grandy? Where's Casa Grandy?" So, anyway, I'm not hearing that anymore. That's right. So it's good stuff. We also stopped by, because he's a veteran, we stopped by the HOHP office and, and had a nice tour. We really, he was enamored by, if you don't, if you haven't been there, you really should go, it's like a small museum.
Yeah, it is.
It's got World War I, World War II, Vietnam, it's got, you know, all of the Middle East conflicts that we've had, so it's, it's almost a history in, in the battles that the United States has been in, and all the contributions that people have given, they have them on every wall, and they have a whole center in the middle that has a bunch of historical stuff in it, so if you haven't been there, please stop by and really, really take a look at it. They've done an amazing job. They are almost ready, almost done with their facility out off of McCartney, which is a transitional housing, a veteran's transitional housing. They're not quite done yet, I'm sure that Kim will give us an opportunity, don't let us know when they're going to do some sort of ribbon cutting or grand opening out there, but she also gave us a tour of the facility, so she's, Kim's just, Kim Vander, she's an amazing person over there, and has done an amazing job for our veterans, so just want to give her a shout-out. I attended on Sunday the Crossroads Church grand opening. What an amazing facility. It seats 1,000 people in stadium seating, not benches.
1,800, is it?
1,078.
Yes, 1,078. It's 1,078.
1,078.
They can put more seats in there.
But those chairs are nice.
They have plenty of room, and the chairs are really nice. I know, because I sat in them, and, and what a screen and audiovisual system. It is as nice as any major theater that I've ever been in.
It's top of the line.
It is top of the line. They've got like a 30-by-20 LED screen, and then they have two, I'll call them six-foot-wide by 20-foot-tall LED screens, and then their projectors, so the whole wall is visual.
And the LED screen is called an LED wall.
Yeah, well, when it gets that big, it is a wall. So it was amazing, and I asked him, I said, "Can I do my stay of the city here next year?" And Pastor Tim says, "Absolutely." So that may be where we're going next year, Gloria. Will we do it in the Crossroads Church? We can see if we can fill it up with 1,078 people. So, anyway, it was, it was a lot of fun. We did the ribbon cutting, I'm glad to see it open, I know the city staff really worked hard to make that happen, so Larry, please extend my appreciation for all their efforts. I know that they went above and beyond to try and make sure that it did happen, and I, of course, you know, big shout-out to the, to the, you know, Crossroads Church and all the volunteers, they, they worked night and day on that project to get it done, so it's, it's amazing to see what you can do when you all come together. So, it was, I'm super impressed, I think they should rent it out, they could actually make some serious money.
We'll be singing there.
Yeah, yeah, excellent. So, also attended the ULI, which is Urban Land Institute, the Trends Day last week, and it was a great event, it was up in Phoenix, had an opportunity to, to talk to a lot of folks that were there, there were a lot of good speakers, they had some highlights on future-proofing water and agriculture, they did, they did these little quick hits where they talked about retail and the future of retail, and they talked about redevelopment paths and historic preservation and adaptive use. So it was, it was really a good mix of events and information that was shared, so I'll try and share this with everybody in terms of what exactly happened up there. And that's probably enough, I could talk another five minutes, but I won't. Does anybody else have anything else for the good of the order? All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.